Okay, so, good morning, everyone. Welcome to Puka County. Today is Tuesday. March first, Thursday of March twenty twenty-two. The time is ten oh two A M. It is a special meeting agenda to consider impact fees. And our guest is, of course, Galena Consulting, Anne Westcott. Thank you, Anne, for being here. I am calling the meeting to order, attending the commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Filios. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. And our one and only business item, and it is a discussion item, which means we will not be voting today. And it's Anne from Galena Consulting, as indicated earlier, presenting for the Fire and EMS District Impact Fee Recommendation from the Development Impact Fee Advisory Committee, also known as DFAC. Anne, take it away, please.
Do you need me here? Oh, you can sit down.
That's easier.
My goodness.
And I'll also add that this gentleman next to Anne is Pat Ray.
Your Pat Ray?
Yes.
How bad?
We've talked.
No, we're old friends. And he's my old friend, yes. Well, thank you for making time for us this morning. I spent the day in the rain in Bennoa County yesterday. And let's just say, I just really appreciate being here with you all today, so. Um, we are here after about nine months of work, as you know. I'm representing the seven of the fire districts in Kootenay County plus KC EMS. The only fire district who is not with us is Warley. They chose not to participate at the beginning, but have since signed a contract. So they may be coming to you in the next iteration. I'll also want you to keep in mind that Saint Mary's Fire District does come into Kootenay County up to Harrison. So they may be having a conversation with you months and months from now.
Okay.
Um, and I would like to acknowledge the fact that I told them all to show up, and they did. So we have a lot of fire chiefs here, deputy fire chiefs, and a lot of fire district commissioners. Uh, they obviously have an interest in this project. And we have two of our DFAC members, Matt Gino with Gino Construction. Is that right? No, your name's Matt Gray.
Matt Gray.
With Gino Construction. It's my son's name, it's very confusing. Uh, and the former most celebrated chief of Eastside.
Eastside Fire, okay.
Yes.
Welcome, gentlemen, welcome.
All right, so I know you've seen this map before, and you live it. Uh, you have a very large county with a lot of area to cover. And it is currently covered, um, in the unincorporated county by these, um, eight plus one, uh, districts. We're seeing significant growth, as you know, uh, within your county. This growth puts a strain on, on, um, the fire district's ability to respond. So it's not just, um, that the stations, that there aren't enough stations. In some cases, it's that the stations are not in the right place. They were built many, many years ago, and growth was approved somewhere else. It could be, uh, that they don't have the right kind of apparatus. As you're, as more vertical growth is being approved, they need different types of apparatus to get water to that place. Um, it's also that if you're growing by forty percent over the next ten years, calls for service will grow at an equal rate. And when you have almost double the amount, uh, at fifty percent more calls, those calls are going to start backing up. And that then increases, uh, your level of service. So as we know, uh, impact fees are based on your current level of service. They are only in place to make sure the level of service doesn't get worse, i.e. a longer response time as growth comes. Uh, the risk, obviously, of it taking longer to respond is an increased mortality, not only of, uh, residents, but also injuries, uh, to first responders and increased fire loss. And then the other part that we don't always think about is, as we grow, if that level of service decreases, particularly in the more rural areas, they get kind of bumped off the edge in their insurance rating, and people cannot, either cannot insure their properties or their fire premiums go up significantly. So I'm quite aware that in your county, as in many of the counties throughout Idaho, taxpayers are expressing a desire for growth to pay its own way. And impact fees are really the only funding source we have in the state of Idaho that can equitably assign the burden of the cost of that capital to new growth. The state statute does allow fire districts to have impact fees. It just makes it virtually, uh, well, just very complicated for them to execute it themselves. They can't adopt ordinances, and they don't collect building permits. So at this point in the legislation, the, uh, fire districts need to go to the cities and the counties that they serve and ask for those entities to adopt an ordinance, collect the fees, and distribute those to the districts so that they can purchase the things that are on their capital improvement plan. Now, I know your packet is huge. Um, all of the reports for each of the districts are exactly in the same format. I figured today I would take a pretty high-level, kind of pull-up summary exhibits for us to look at. Um, but what you should know is that I go through these same seven questions in every report. And the first part is looking at who does each district serve? How many households? How many people? How much non-residential? And what is the response time they currently have within their district? Then what assets are needed in each district to be able to provide that level of service? And that could be stations, apparatus, vehicles, and equipment that last at least ten years. The number four is not, uh, not allowed to be the way that I calculate impact fees, but I like to do it as a double check to get an idea of how much existing taxpayers have already paid into the system in order to provide that level of service. I come back to that at the end as a double check, just to see, are we asking development to pay more than everyone has already paid in? Uh, usually, we are not. If we are, there needs to be some compelling, uh, explanation for that. So number five, six, and seven are really how we do the impact fee calculations. What are our growth projections? We were able to work with your assessor's office, pulling building permit, uh, history, talking, you know, to cities in the county, information that we had from planning that was able to give us growth projections for each of those districts. And those assumptions are also what gets vetted by your DFAC, which includes members of the building and development community, as well as people who do not represent those fields. The fire chiefs, the fire commissions, they all looked at this data as well. I guess what I'm saying is I don't just make it up. Um, number seven is, we know who's coming. We know what we need to build or buy in order to keep the level of service constant. And that's just math. It's just the dollar amount divided by who's coming, and that's the impact fee. And that was the fancy slide on the math, or, as Chief Ryan says, the magic. Um, okay, so this is a high-level look at our, uh, current situation within each of these districts. I pull Kootenay County EMS out because they have a much different divisor in that they are serving all of the cities and counties. So we have our current population. You will know if you counted up all of the seven districts that it does not add up to one hundred and seventy-four thousand, not only because Warley and Saint Mary's aren't in there, but you have areas within the county that are not within a district. Current number of households, current number of non-residential square feet, and then the current asset value. Obviously, we'll see the highest amount of assets in Kootenay County Fire and Rescue. They are the most urbanized, they have the most stations, followed by Northern Lakes and Timberlake. Um, the smallest amount at Hauser Lake, they have one station and some little pieces here and there. Maybe after last night, they will need different infrastructure. Um, current level of service for each of those entities. Again, you're going to see a much longer time on Eastside and Micah Kid. And that's not only because these are completely volunteer firefighting forces, um, but they're on windy roads with water in between things. So it just takes longer to get places. Then the current buy-in. So I take that current asset value, and I divide it by the number of households that are currently there. We'll take Eastside, six point eight million dollars of assets that provide about a nine-and-a-half-minute response time. Every household in the Eastside District has essentially paid in four thousand four hundred and forty-seven dollars to get that level of service. You'll see, I averaged it for all of the fire districts. Clearly, the buy-in is going to be higher in the smaller districts because it's the same cost of a station divided by fewer people. But the average is a little over thirty, uh, thirty-one hundred dollars and about a dollar sixty per non-residential. And then Kootenay County EMS is obviously, uh, much lower per household because it's all of the households in the county. Any questions on this?
Yeah, Anne, quickly, when, for example, back to Eastside, when you say four hundred and forty-four, forty-four, forty-seven, that's over what period of time?
That just, uh, it just essentially means over all of the time that those assets were acquired.
Okay, okay.
So it, that's why we don't use it as an actual tool to calculate impact fees. It's more of just an idea that in some states, you can actually calculate that number and then charge the next guy that number. Idaho doesn't allow us to do that. We have to do a capital or forward-looking, uh, methodology. But I always think it's interesting, um, particularly when we're in economic cycles where there might be a lot more pushback to impact fees, to be able to know, uh, what it takes per house to provide a current response. So it's kind of just a, more of an anecdotal piece of information.
Okay.
So projected growth, uh, you can see what our twenty thirty-one population, household, non-residential growth. Uh, non-residential is sometimes just a factor of retail following rooftops, a kind of a metric that we use. In some cases, we were able to dig in a little further, knowing what types of large developments, uh, non-residential developments were coming. You see the net population growth for each district and then the county as a whole. And on average, throughout the county, it's about forty percent over ten years. You will see Timberlake takes the, uh, the gold star for seventy percent, um, growth, uh, particularly around the Athol area and in the unincorporated area. You're seeing a lot of growth there. So you will see, um, each of these individual capital improvement plans set out. And you'll see that each district has different needs because of, they all have different growth rates, they have different geography. Uh, and they also, um, we'll talk about this in a minute, but the way that they staff is different, and so they'll have different, uh, needs because of that. But this is just a summary of showing, uh, the ten-year capital improvement plan for each of the districts, and then the portion that's impact fee eligible. So when I work with my clients, I want them to give me their entire capital improvement plan so that the fire commissioners are able to see everything that needs to be funded in the same way that, uh, were the county to do impact fees, you would see that as well. I always feel that elected officials deserve to see it on one page and not have it in six different places. So, uh, countywide, all of these districts and EMS need about eighty-three million dollars' worth of capital in order to just make it through the next ten years. Some of that is growth-related, about half, about forty million dollars' worth. And the rest of it is replacements of existing apparatus. Um, and sometimes, uh, if they have a deficiency in an existing station, if they're already short of space, I can't use impact fees for that. So we go through a methodology of making sure, uh, that we are not charging growth for things that are already deficient. So you can see the math works differently for each district because we're taking that impact fee portion. We'll stick with Eastside, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand out of a three-point-six-million-dollar CIP, dividing it by their growth. And in Eastside, it's eighteen hundred dollars per residential unit, ninety cents per non-residential. Hauser Lake, uh, is, is the highest one in this, um, in this group. And when we go through their CIP, and the fact that even though they're growing at forty percent, forty percent of the population of Hauser Lake's district is different than forty percent of Kootenay County Fire and Rescue, for example. On average, then, uh, the average, uh, impact fee that's being proposed is about two thousand dollars per fire district, and that is spot-on with what I'm seeing throughout the rest of the state. And that always makes me feel good when we do all of these completely independently, and they end up with some normal mean. That really is telling us statewide, um, we'll see smaller numbers sometimes in incorporated cities because they already have a lot of extra capacity or infrastructure in place. With the rate of growth that we're seeing in Idaho, with the increased costs of construction, and that's really what drives this number, uh, that is pretty much, uh, an agreed-upon number that every house has a proportional share of a new station, et cetera, there. And Kootenay County EMS, again, has a tiny little amount because they have many more households to pay in. Also, their stuff is not as expensive. Questions just to hear? Are you okay to go through the capital improvement plans? These exhibits really are the most important exhibit in each of the reports. Um, so we'll look at Eastside, and, uh, Chief Lynn is here. If you have any questions, um, let me go back to the fact that different, uh, some of, some of your fire districts have paid firefighters. Some have volunteer firefighters, and some have a mix. Volunteer firefighters in Kootenay County, ten years ago, worked out great. But as the population grows and the calls for service grow and the possibility of stacking calls grows, getting volunteers to the station to then deploy adds time. And as the fire districts who have volunteers are looking at their growth and realizing that, um, it, it's kind of hard now to get volunteers, to want to do this kind of work for no pay. Um, and so that some of them, you'll see, their capital improvement plans are not build another station. It's expand an existing station to provide living quarters and dorms. That lets them pay per day, basically, when those volunteers can do a shift in, in-house in the station. They are then cutting off quite a few minutes of, of response time. Uh, for these smaller districts, building an entire new station would be very, uh, cost prohibitive, but also if there's no one to go to the station, it doesn't help. So, so we're, that's the kind of solution you're going to see in Eastside is expanding Station Two for growth. They need about thirty-six hundred, uh, square feet. The growth portion's only fifty percent because they already are crowded in, in their station now. So we looked at square footage, and how much do they need just to make things work where they are? And then how many of those square feet are really for the dorms? And that's where we get to fifty percent. So one point four million dollars for that project, seven hundred and twenty thousand of it would go into the impact fee calculations. The remainder is, uh, the fire commissioner's problem, uh, from other sources, which for them just means property taxes. Under apparatus and vehicles, you see, they don't need any new pieces of apparatus. They just need to replace what they have. Same replacing their self-contained breathing apparatus. So those all say zero. That's all going to be a general fund, uh, issue. But the ten SCVAs for additional volunteers and ten bunker sets, those are only needed because of growth, just like the dorms and living quarters. So those can be paid for with impact fees. So, um, and then we see down here that, um, the cost to do this study is impact fee eligible, and so they will collect that money over time as well. So there's their three-point-six-million-dollar capital improvement plan, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand of which is impact fee eligible. That's half of the station and those turnouts and SCVAs. The other two-point-eight-million dollars is, um, not growth problem, essentially. Whoops. Um, so questions about that? Questions about how that might, that makes sense to you, obviously? Okay. Uh, Hauser Lake, same situation. Uh, they were already planning to replace Station One. It's inadequate, doesn't meet their needs. But while they do it, they're going to make it thirty-three percent larger to be able to put, uh, those dorms and living spaces in. They, however, because of growth and because of, um, they obviously have quite a lot of wildland interface, um, in that district, two additional brush trucks and one quick-response unit to be able to address, uh, the additional calls for service. Those are both impact fee eligible, as are their, uh, equipment for the four new firefighters. And so out of a five-point-three, almost five-point-four-million-dollar capital improvement plan, two million of it is impact fee eligible. Now, here's the, the big, the big guy in the, uh, conversation. I notice he doesn't show up. That's, that's nice. They sends, sends poor Deputy Ryan. But, uh, Kootenay County Fire and Rescue, um, I'm glad you have a handout because this is hard to see on the screen. You, uh, know that Kootenay County floated a bond recently successfully. Um, that's wonderful because many of my clients are not able to get to meet that threshold. But their way of communicating to the public when they floated that bond was, "We're going to bond for the things that have nothing to do with growth. We're going to fix our house right now, and we are going to look at, for impact fees to pay for everything growth-related going forward." And I think that strategy, uh, has been used in some other districts, and that is how we're getting bonds funded, is for existing taxpayers to know that growth will pay their share as well. So we list, uh, several of the relocating Station Three for coverage, relocating Four for coverage, uh, updating Station One. Those projects are all, um, things that were included in the bond, um, and so they will not be impact fee eligible. But we do have, um, uh, and you'll see here, so this, um, Station Number Five is bond-funded. There's quite a lot of, uh, it technically would be growth-eligible, but because it already was fended in the bond, it doesn't go into those calculations. But the new Station Number Six and Seven for growth are only needed because of growth and are a hundred percent. The new fire boat house, um, they, they're getting a new boat, so they needed a new house, but they already sort of needed that, so I picked fifty percent as that growth-related. And then you'll see, obviously, every new station needs an engine, a brush truck, staff vehicle. So, uh, those are the types of items that then tend to go along. And then a tender for growth, you want to make sure that we have water strategically placed throughout the district. And then a very long list of all of the replacement items that they have. New radios for growth, that's an eligible item if it lasts at least ten years. So out of their thirty-two-million-dollar, uh, capital improvement plan, twelve million dollars of it is impact fee eligible. And then we have Micah Kid. Um, Micah Kid, uh, sort of got penalized for being proactive. They already did an expansion of their Station One to add their crew quarters, and the impact fees can't go backwards, so we couldn't help them pay for that. They're going to pay off the rest of the improvements they've already made. But they do need an additional dual-duty brush truck, and so that is, uh, one of the only, that's the only apparatus that's eligible. Plus, if they have, uh, as they're planning to have ten additional fire fetters, those SCVAs and turnouts or bunker gear. So they have a two-million-dollar capital improvement plan. About half a million of it is impact fee eligible. Northern Lakes, um, Northern Lakes, uh, growing at a, at a fast clip as well. Two new stations are necessary because of growth, and they are both one-hundred percent impact fee eligible. Again, two engines, two water tenders, brush trucks, uh, to be able to address, uh, the needs of those stations. Now, this additional ladder truck, um, would be entirely impact fee eligible, except that growth within, uh, remembering that Northern Lakes covers Hayden and Rathdrum, that vertical growth within those areas has already required the need of a ladder truck. So it can't go backwards to pay for that. That'll still be on existing taxes. Twelve-million-dollar, uh, capital improvement plan, a majority of it, ten million, is impact fee eligible. Again, this has to do with timing. So if I have a district that just replaced a bunch of apparatus, um, they're going to have a different percentage of their CIP that's eligible. Spirit Lake Fire, um, same situation as we saw in Hauser and in Eastside, replacing and expanding a station for growth. Uh, again, half impact fee, half not, then additional apparatus that is needed there. About a six-million-dollar capital plan, about half of that is impact fee eligible. And our last one, Timberlake, let's not sure we have EMS. Timberlake, um, one new station, one expansion of a station for growth. Um, those are both impact fee eligible. You'll see in the Station Seven for growth, so we plan these things out over a ten-year period, and Station Number Seven's kind of at the end of the ten-year period. So recovering a hundred percent of the cost from growth in the first ten years did not seem appropriate. So we'll take fifty percent of that cost, um, in the, no, that's totally wrong. Forget I just said that. Sometimes that's what I do. We didn't do that here. Well, okay, uh, they, however, do need a ladder truck for the growth that they're starting to see, uh, in Athol and other places where they're seeing vertical growth, an additional engine, upgraded fireboat, an additional tender. And they're looking at an additional twelve firefighters. So, um, each of the districts is asked by me to say, uh, "Look at your budget, particularly post-House Bill three eighty-nine. Make sure that you have a, uh, you know, a projected budget that will cover the number of new firefighters." Because I don't want to use impact fees to expand a station that you're never going to have people in. So that's kind of been a double, a double test, um, that I do. Seven-point-three-million-dollar CIP, almost all of it is impact fee eligible. And then the EMS, uh, system, um, Chief Keely is, is out of town on vacation. But, um, they would like to expand their existing administration building on Saultes. Um, right now, all of the ambulances come to the hospital to, uh, restock, and that is a huge inefficiency. So having them have their own secure, um, dispensary at the administration building will keep all of those ambulances up in the north area of the county. Uh, additional shop, they're already, uh, planning to do some of that, but, uh, twenty-five percent of it corresponds to the five additional ambulances that they'll need. And, uh, you know, you know, KC EMS spreads those out where the best, um, deployment is at that time. And an additional critical care ambulance and response vehicle. And then all of the equipment is just stuff that goes on those ambulances. It's all very expensive and lasts ten years. So they have a fourteen-million-dollar CIP, four-point-three million of it is impact fee eligible. So we now go back to that original, um, slide that we had earlier, which is taking the CIP value for each of those districts and the impact fee portion that we discussed in each of those CIPs, dividing it by the number of households and non-residential square feet that is coming. And those are the proposed fees. Probably a good place to stop and see what questions you have.
Leslie, Bill?
God, you guys are with it. Good grief. All right.
So when you say, so basically, you're anticipating the number of units that are going to be built?
Yes.
And that's what's figuring into the computation?
Yes, exactly. The proposed fee per unit is this, whoa, wrong button, is this eight hundred, this impact fee eligible amount divided by the number of new households we have projected coming. And that's a really good point, is, um, I am not Johnny Carson, I cannot predict the future. This is the best knowledge that we have as of today. Now I just showed you how old I am. Um, and, uh, part of the job of the impact fee advisory committee, every year when they meet, is we will look at growth projections and see, were we off? Is it different in one area or the other? Uh, so that we keep these, not only the growth projections, but the costs. Um, in the past, and the state statute only requires it be updated every five years. In the past five years, a lot of my clients, cities, counties, districts, really ended up losing, uh, all of that, um, that cost to, uh, construction costs. So not only are we going to really utilize, or I would recommend utilizing your advisory committees with staff, with the districts, every year to make sure that the numbers and the growth projections are correct. When they get too out of whack, you should update these fees and not wait until the five-year period.
Oh, okay.
Five years really, uh, worked for a very long time. But in this, in Idaho's growth market, it's just...
Anne, uh, what population projection are you dealing with? Yeah, we're roughly, in fact, today, I just happened to hear this morning at a meeting, we're at a hundred and seventy-six thousand two hundred. We look at, what is it? Is it two-hundred? Is it two hundred forty thousand in ten years?
I have, um... You're going to two hundred and forty-three thousand population, hundred and seven thousand households, sixteen million non-residential.
In ten years?
In ten years.
And then another ten, is it like three fifty?
I didn't go that far.
You don't go that far?
I can only count to ten at a time.
Fair enough, thank you.
Also, uh, yeah, the twenty-year, I mean, who knows, so...
So I have a question then. If you come back a year from now and find out that this is not good, so then everybody pays the same impact fees for the year, then the second year potentially, they could be paying more, or less?
Or less.
Potentially, I've never seen that happen. I've never actually updated one year after. And one of the reasons is I'm recommending to all of my clients that they put in inflationary factor in the ordinance tagged to the construction cost index, not the consumer price index.
Oh, okay.
So that they can keep up with this. Because normally, um, the reason we would change something is that growth surpassed our projection, and we needed to put in additional station. In that case, both the numerator and denominator would be going up, so there wouldn't be that much change. Right now, growth is clipping along at the, you know, rate that we've projected, but you double the cost of a station, and that's what messes things up. So by becoming true today, using these annual inflationary indexes, and then, um, it will be more about whether or not the growth, um, significantly changes that would require an update. I think the inflationary factor will actually stave off those frequent updates. One thing to think about, though, is even if, now I've just imagined equal absorption of growth over ten years. Let's say you have three years of explosive growth, and then it really cools off, we have another recession. The fee's not going to go down, because we've already established a relationship between a house and its proportional share of the stations that will serve it. So for those three years, you'll collect less, but it will go up again. And so if everyone's paying their share over ten years, and we raise that much money over ten years, and we build the stations necessary for that amount of growth, we're good. If something happened and no growth would ever come again, yes, that's when we need to start saying, uh, essentially, we need to cut those CIPs down, and then reevaluate what the growth really is. But no one will end up, in the past, having paid too much or too little, 'cause it still will be their share of whatever capital was built for them.
Makes sense.
That makes sense.
Yeah, well, in one year could be an aberration. You can have, you can have an event-
Right.
-that triggers, uh, repercussions in a market, and then the market recovers.
Yeah. You can also have aberrations, uh, you know, Amazon goes in in Nampa, and-
Oh, okay.
And then they have, you know, enough non-residential fees. We didn't know Nampa was gonna go in there. Um, they'll add something to their CAP to address the needs of that facility. A- and that's sort of an aberration anyway, 'cause they have a lot of their own fire suppression, but... So, uh, we went through this process with each of the districts. Each of the districts, um, that have, that serve a city, which is everyone except for Micah Kidd in Eastside, each of those cities had their own impact fee advisory committee, 'cause our legislature decided last year that was what we needed to do. So lots and lots of people have looked at these. And in each of these cases, um, the cities in these districts have recommended to their city councils, they are all in process now, they've already briefed the councils with their recommendation, and those cities are now moving into their public hearing process. The big challenge for me is to come out of this process with eight districts and have everyone in agreement. We're really close. So, um, the impact fee advisory committee that we used for Cootney County, um, and this was prior to any discussion about whether or not the county would utilize impact fees for its own needs, was made of, um, five people, residents throughout the entire county, two of whom directly represent growth, uh, development, building, real estate, two who absolutely do not, um, and then I think the third one actually is also, uh, represents growth. And they came to you with two recommendations, they are just an advisory committee. Um, one saying they've read these reports, they concur with the findings, and they recommend that you move forward with the public hearings necessary to adopt the fees and collect for the districts. Uh, the committee also discussed quite a lot that this is gonna be, um, new. You know, new in this county. And while people who build in a lot of different areas will not be surprised by it, um, they recommended that the, um, Board of Commissioners provide additional public outreach and education. Uh, not s- they didn't specifically have a way in mind that they thought that would be necessary. Um, sometimes I will go mil- meet with the Building Contractors Association, sometimes, uh, in Northside Fire District in Bonner County, we, um, had an article in the paper, and we did a survey, um, we added things in the, uh, utility bills, you know, just to be able to give people an opportunity to know that it's coming. Um, so I would leave that to you to think about. The next steps that we would have, if you concur that we should move ahead, are two public hearings. And the first one is not about the fees, it's about the capital improvement plans. Would be a text amendment to your comp plan that we would work with planning on, and it would essentially say, "We are amending the comp plan by appendix to add these eight capital improvement plans." And I can only imagine that the purpose of that is to ensure that we're not collecting fees for something that contradicts your comp plan.
Okay.
Then, uh, after your P and Z, it goes through that hearing, then you'd have an impact fee hearing on the proposed, uh, ordinance. I, legal counsel and I have already discussed what this might look like. Um, and then, if you, uh, went through both of those hearings, you would consider adopting the amendment, the ordinance, and then the intergovernmental agreement. So we've already prepared intergovernmental agreements between the county and each district that are just kind of sitting in wait with PAT. Um, and this exact process is where all of the cities are right now. The post-falls is almost done, I think. I think tonight or next week, they will actually completely have adopted them and the IGA. And the rest of the cities are just kind of going through, you know, scheduling these processes. Um, but that intergovernmental agreement, uh, just basically is a lot of pages of saying, "Here's how you collect it, here's how you give it to them, they should pay you an administrative fee for doing so, you're not liable for anything, they are responsible, et cetera." Did you like how I just diminished your entire field of practice into two sentences? Uh, so again, I think we've already, uh, covered this. Yep. So what else can I answer about that? Mm-hmm. That's kind of just what we're looking for, is you don't have any more questions at this point. You're ready for us to work on the comp plan amendment and move ahead.
So then, David, would you be scheduling the public hearings?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry?
No, you're right, there you go.
There we go, my volume's off.
We all set?
Uh, I guess my question is, if there is, uh, which I don't expect it, but if there is large public outcry against this, um, is there an opportunity for the districts to come together and say, "Okay, we're, we're backing off"? Or is it too late, this is in motion, it's gonna happen, whether the people want it or don't want it?
I think part of that is the education concept. Um, and I've found in each of the advisory committees, and as we've talked to city councils throughout the county, understanding that this has very little impact on existing taxpayers, except that it keeps them from subsidizing growth. So once people really understand who pays it and what it's for, uh, we generally see support, um, by, um, by the, by the taxed public, um, developers who will be the ones paying it, uh, the builders actually, 'cause it's not the developer, it's the builder who will pay it and who will pass it on to the homebuyer. Um, you know, having it thrown on them, uh, as a surprise is never good. So, um, that's part of the, you know, outreach that we can do with building contractors to let them know, you know, this, this mob, it, it goes into effect thirty days after the adoption, or you can allow it to go into effect in a longer period of time, whatever you want. Um, so that might be where your pushback is.
And I would just add, you know, that's part of the purpose of the public hearing process to, you know, allow people in different constituencies to express their viewpoints and, you know, it could be the decision of the board ultimately not to implement the impact fee scheme, or to implement it, or to modify it somehow. So that, that decision is ultimately yours.
Okay, and then the education piece, can we hire a contractor and charge it back to the districts?
You could, um, I don't, uh, it doesn't, I don't think it has to be com- very ex- expend- extensive. I can do it on, it depends on what your protocol usually is for your outreach, whatever you want to do. Yeah, charge them all, that's...
I, it was just a question, I, that's not the, uh, path I was planning on taking, I'm just curious.
You know, decide right now, but as you think about, I would say in a really good construction market, um, there is usually less feedback from the fee payers. Um, this is why it's really important for me to involve those people in the process, to be really transparent about the process. And what the building and development community are looking for is a lack of transparency, um, studies that are done not in compliance with state statute, taking too much money for things that are not growth-related, and then not having oversight of the process after that. So if I can ensure that those blocks are all taken care of, I'm usually not, um, and you, you did have, again, developers on, on the committee for the county, so...
Sure.
So I'll just send all the calls to, uh, those developers.
You'll have to come to a microphone.
If I just added maybe a thought?
Yeah, yeah, go right ahead.
As far as the public outreach goes, after our last DPAC meeting, my little brain kicked in and got thinking that the cities are so far along with this, and our builders are building on both city and in the county, that I think the public outreach really will be minimized, because it's already happening in the cities.
And interestingly, uh, about a year ago, David and I met with, excuse me, a small contingent of N I B C A, North Idaho Building, uh, Builders and Contractors, and they were fine to an individual one. To your point, Anne, they're gonna charge it off to the buyers.
I work closely with the Idaho B C A to ensure that they understand my methodology, that they have options. And I think when those things are covered, there's less, um, concern.
I, I was just thinking about, um, citizen outcry being taxed for the future, and, um, is it gonna further hurt people's ability to afford homes?
So that, that is one issue that we are talking about, so, um, and, and it's, that is a really hard conversation to have with someone in a, like, a public hearing to try to explain, yes, any additional cost we put on the price of this home is going to raise the assessed valuation of this home. Not as much as the market will, or the cost of lumber will, but yes, it will. And at some point, we're disqualifying people from being able to afford that mortgage. Um, where I think that is of most concern is the construction of affordable housing. You have the ability under statute to exempt affordable housing from paying these fees. Um, some cities have expressed concern and a desire to do that, and some have not. Um, if, uh, and that is all of a sudden becoming of interest to everyone throughout Idaho, whereas before, I don't think it ever came up. Um, the districts would need to cover whatever amount is exempted. And you can be very clear in the ordinance about, um, you know, what percentage of, um, AMI qualifies as an affordable housing. Uh, so you have a lot of flexibility, um, and, and you can, uh, work with legal counsel on what that would look like. Um, impact fees really are not the thing that either makes someone decide to build or not. And they're not the thing that, uh, measurably changes existing residents' uh, ability to afford something. Now, we did have, um, in one of these districts, the other night, after you did a beautiful job on the, uh, amendment to the area of impact, um, someone saying, "I have, you know, four lots that I purchased twenty years ago and planning to build on them. I shouldn't have to pay, this should be for people coming from the outside, who should have to pay." And I hear that in a lot of places, and I understand, you know, this has been my family's retirement parcel, we've had it forever. Um, most, uh, attorneys that we work with says you cannot exempt people just because they happen to already live here and own bare land. Um, but it would be up to you to, to look at that if that was a...
Well, and you know, Anne, to your point, as I look at the, the proposed fees, and let's take the highest one here, which is Hauser Lake, at just under thirty-seven hundred bucks. Well, if you're building a two thousand square foot home, you're not getting away with much less than six hundred thousand at three hundred bucks a square foot, unless you're doing it yourself and subbing it out, and good luck with that, because the crews are already taken. So you're looking at one-half of one percent of the price of that home. I don't see the problem. I don't think that's gonna be the make or break.
And I think when we also come back to what is the whole point? To make sure that someone can get to you before you die, or your house burns down. I, I think that fire is always the easiest one to do. Um, we have sometimes more work in other categories, but in fire, people can get, "All right, I build this house, I'm creating more demand on the fire district, I need to pay for my share of what's necessary to respond to my call."
Okay. Any other questions? Leslie, Bill? Okay.
Um, not on the fire, I got some for the counties.
Oh, 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 okay, you mean the upcoming?
Yes.
Okay. All right then, so you wanted direction, you have direction. So David, you're going forward from here?
Yes, sir.
Bill, Leslie?
And on behalf of all of these lovely gentlemen sitting behind me, thank you very much for participating in this process up to this point, and we hope to continue to collaborate.
So David, what are you thinking in terms of timeframe, just roughly?
A workshop with the Plan Commission first, just so they know it's coming.
Okay.
Uh, we could probably pull that off this month.
Yeah.
And then, uh, then it's just a matter of scheduling.
The public hearing?
Right.
Okay. On that note, public comment?
Well, can I, I wanted to ask more questions, unless you want me to just meet with Anne by myself. So I mean, if the fire people want to leave, I mean, Cootney County's looking at signing a contract today to implement fees for sheriffs, jail-
Oh, I'm sorry, your questions had to, okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, with us, and since Anne's here, um, and parks.
Can we do that, or are we gonna be off agenda?
Um, that's a PAT question.
Uh, what does the agenda say?
The agenda reads, uh, Anne, okay, Anne Westcock-Galina Consulting, "Presentation on Cootney County Fire and EMS. District impact fees recommendation from Development Impact Fee Committee."
Okay, yeah, so I think, I think that would be off-subject and probably more appropriate for the agenda than, uh...
Okay, so I'll just meet with that, well, Anne won't be here, she's, she has to leave at one.
But you and I could just have a conversation.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's, that's perfectly fine.
Okay. Any other public comments specifically related to today's topic?
I've sworn them all not to talk.
You've done a good job.
It's a new thing I have where I don't, I don't know how they're gonna deal with that, but...
Okay.
Just pour us to silence.
Oh, fair enough.
If you want to talk.
Okay, I've got ten forty-nine, and this meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone. You bet.